Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call the order, our city council meeting for Monday. Excuse me. Can we close that door, Brian? I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for Monday, February 19th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. First order of business is our opening ceremonies, which will consist of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Smith, if you'll take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Present.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Show Councilmember Lynch absent an excuse, please.
You have a quorum of six.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, February 19th, 2024, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Conversation from the table, from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. We have no recognitions, county and state officials. I don't see any, but I do see, we have a guest official from country of Kosovo. She's the deputy mayor from Kolina, Kosovo. If Marke Salmani, come on up. For those of you that don't know, Tony is here, is kind of a translator for us. And again, I'll read a little bit about Ms. Salmani. She's a well-known personality in the field of education and social engagement in the municipality of Kolina. In her—
Go ahead.
—in her career, she worked—she's worked as a teacher, K through 12, in a couple of different cities. And in 2021, Ms. Samanji was appointed the vice president, which is deputy mayor to us, of the municipality of Kolina, due to her engagement in social, political, and social life. She was appointed that. The women's group from all institutions selected her as the president of the Women's Advocacy Group in the municipality of Kolina. She's also the chairperson of AGK, branching Kolina, and vice chairman of AGK Headquarters. In addition to political and educational engagements, she has shown talent in poetry, publishing her first book of poetry, "Time is a Violin," which mainly summarizes creations from the time of the Kosovo War. Marke Salmanji is engaged in many activities that contribute and advance the issue of gender equality in Kosovo. Her efforts and contribution in various fields make her a prominent figure in Kosovar society. And she did receive a certificate from the Universal Peace Federation for—as an ambassador for peace. And I'll just read part of that. "The Universal Peace Federation acknowledges as ambassadors for peace those individuals whose lives exemplify the ideal of living for the sake of others and who dedicate themselves to practices which promote universal moral values: strong family life, interreligious cooperation, international harmony, renewal of the United Nations, a responsible public media, and the establishment of a culture of peace, transcending racial, national, and religious barriers. The ambassadors for peace contribute to the fulfillment of the hope of all ages, a unified world of peace wherein the spiritual and material dimensions of life are harmonized." And they recognize Ms. Salmanji. And we would like to recognize her with a certificate. Congratulating you.
Fun day, sir.
Thank you very much. She's grateful for giving the opportunity to be in front of you, before you. When I'm standing right now, this is a center of democracy that spreads over—
—developing the city.
— And when we speak about America and hear about America, we have a special feelings and respect due to a help that we received from America during the hard times, hardships.
Where I come from is a small municipality also.
It's very similar to this, which is a municipality assembly.
But from there, it comes out a lot of goods and politics that it comes out of our municipality and spread.
We are aware that in developed countries—
Brazil, for example.
—the country was ahead the gender equality, but we just start also in our city where it's very needed.
She's very, very happy to see this number of women representing the city.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and she's wishing everybody the best, and she's very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item—we don't have anything until item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 4, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafotis. Any comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Okay, action items. We have, first item is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Mr. Ortega.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We're here tonight to consider some rezonings to additional properties. The planning commission has undergone implementation of their master plan by achieving some of their goals, one of those being the elimination of the O1 office district. The intent is to simplify our ordinance standards and also giving property owners more options to redevelop their land and a wider variety of tenants for them to lease. While this rezoning will accomplish that, it will also still protect residents by requiring compliance with our ordinance screening and use standards. So now that the next step in this process is the rezoning of certain properties that were O1 office to a new district. The first of those being 6985 Merriman from the O1 to propose to C2. So this proposed C2 rezoning would allow various retail and service uses on the site. However, just to be specific, it will not permit things such as auto sales, gas stations, bars, smoke shops, and party stores and the like. Those would not be permitted in the C2 district. This rezoning would be consistent with the master plan. It's compatible with the adjacent property when this site is redeveloped in accordance with our regulations for screening, and in the end, this does further the goals of the master plan. There are eight other properties, and I can go over those really quickly in terms of the same, because they're grouped into four different types. The second is 6755 Merriman Road, which is the amazing dental office; 6721 Merriman Road, which is the Model A restores office; 30260 Cherry Hill, which is the Optima Dental Office; and 27676 Cherry Hill, which is the Cherry Hill Dental Center. The proposal is rezon these from O1 to C1 local business. C1 will permit retail sales and service uses, as well as carryout restaurants after special use approval. And a key aspect of this rezoning, too, is that the existing uses on the site will remain. The new regulations that would be applicable to them would not negatively impact them in any way. There would not be any change in the setbacks and the—or the—any other type of requirements for them. It would actually mainly just allow them to continue as they are, while also, once again, giving them—the property owner—an opportunity in the future if they so desire to have a wider variety of uses. In addition, as I mentioned before, with the C1 district, similar to the C2, the C1 will allow retail and service. It will not allow drive-throughs. It will not allow auto sales, gas stations, bars, smoke shops, or party stores. They could not be established on this site. It's mainly for retail uses and service uses, and mainly to service the adjacent residents in these locations. So once again, this is—this type of rezoning to C1 is consistent with the goals of the master plan. It continues the implementation of the master plan, and it's compatible with adjacent property when developed in accordance with their ordinance. The third suggested rezoning is for 6251 Merriman Road and 6237 Merriman Road. These are currently single-family homes. They are currently zoned O1 office, so the proposal is to rezon these to R1 one-family. We're not exactly sure when they were rezoned to O1. It might have been possible they were rezoned to O1 to allow for some type of future office use, maybe because of the proximity to the straight farmhouse, but the proposal is to rezon these to single-family. In that way, the existing homes would then be principal permitted uses on the site. These existing homeowners could then do an addition to their home without any repercussions for—from having been zoned O1 previously, and they would be allowed to further invest in the community. So this rezoning is consistent with the future land use map of the master plan and consistent with our master plan goals. Finally, we're taking this opportunity to rezon two sites, 123 Ingster Road and 155 Ingster Road. 123 Ingster is the Wendy's Restaurant. 155 Ingster is Magnolia Flowers. Both sites are zoned a combination of districts, C3 business and R3 multifamily. The issue here was that when these sites were developed as commercial, chances are the R3 zoning wasn't efficiently removed from the site. There are certain portions, because they were a combination of the smaller lots in the area, that were created for their development. So by rezoning all—both these sites to straight C3, just C3 commercial, it would allow for reinvestment. The Wendy's Restaurant is actually considering a redevelopment of their site. It's something you might seem familiar with other restaurants in the community where they refresh their facade and the interior of the building. This would allow them to reinvest in the site by doing things administratively. It would not require any other kinds of rezonings. So these—once—in this particular case, once again, it's consistent with our master plan. It's consistent with the future land use map of the city, and it's consistent with our goals. Those are the proposed rezonings before you tonight, and I can take any questions with regards to this initiative.
Any questions?
Mayor.
Go ahead. Councilmember Karafotis.
Where the Wendy's is, and then behind them is the Magnolia Flowers. It's just—it's just keeping it at the C3—general business, right?
Yes, that's correct. It's just there are certain portions of the site, for some reason, still have an R3 zoning, and that will eliminate that, and it'll make the entire site commercial.
Would someone be allowed to build a strip mall there?
Based on the size, I'm not sure. I don't—I wouldn't think so. It'd be kind of difficult. But technically, if they really wanted to redevelop the site, they could, but they would have to meet all of our requirements for parking, and that's usually the—
That's why I'm asking, because the sites right after those are where we're having all the parking issues, because we have all the strip malls that we allowed to restaurants, and there's no parking anywhere.
True. And so that—and so if these were ever to be redeveloped, we would make sure to apply all parking requirements on the site, and so therefore, they would only be able to have as much square footage as parking would be allowed to fit on the site.
Okay. And then the areas on Merriman, like where the dental office is, so the dental office stays there for five years, and they decide to move, then someone could build a house there?
No. With the dental office, they're actually supposed to be C1 local. That particular site is being requested for C1 local, so they can remain, and then they could be redeveloped as a retail use, a service use, or an office.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, motion is in order. Mayor Protem Dole.
I motion to approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to rezon the following properties. A, rezoning of 6985 Merriman Road from O1 office to C2 community business. B, rezoning of 6755 Merriman Road, 6721 Merriman Road, 30260 Cherry Hill Road, and 27676 Cherry Hill Road from O1 office to C1 local business. C, the rezoning of 6251 Merriman Road and 6237 Merriman Road from O1 office to R1 one-family residential. And D, rezoning of 155 Ingster Road and 123 Ingster Road from C3 general business and R3 multiple family residential to C3 general business.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafotis. Any further comment from the table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Okay, item two is special land use for 32850 Ford Road. Mr. Ortega.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So the suburban Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram automobile dealership at the northeast corner of Ford and Vinoy is requesting to demolish the existing one-story standalone used car sales office and construct a new Jeep showroom that would be in addition to the principal showroom to—the on the west portion of the site. This addition does require the applicant to go through the special land use review and approval process. So at the latest planning commission meeting in February, a public hearing was held, and then the planning commission has recommended approval of this special land use contingent upon site plan approval. The planning commission did also at that meeting grant site plan approval contingent on submitting a revised plan that requested some additional landscaping, just to enhance the site slightly. I would note that the existing site is in compliance with all our special requirements for a automobile dealership. It has all—the—it meets all the standards and those requirements. Therefore, they're—that's why they're recommending approval. So before you tonight is two options. One is you can choose to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve of the use and then grant final approval for the auto sales use. Or option two is you can choose to schedule a public hearing and discuss this issue at a future council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I make a motion to approve the attached special—special land use request to approve a special land use in the C3 general business zoning district for the addition to an automobile sales dealership at 32850 Ford Road.
Support.
So, just to point a clarification, so your options are today that you can either not take it under consideration, and thus, the planning commission's recommendation of approval becomes final approval, or if you would like to discuss it further, you can do option two and make a motion to take it under, you know, consideration, and then we would schedule a public hearing for a future meeting.
Yeah, so option one is just, we agree with the planning commission and we'll allow it.
I make a motion to go with option one.
Okay. Supporter?
Support.
Okay. Further comments from the table? Councilmember Karafotis.
Just—I'm sure everybody's wondering, so there's already auto sales there. Why do we have to prove that there's auto sales there, again, on the same property, just because they're building another building?
Well, the issue was that, actually, they've been there for a very long time. We went back through and searched through the records, and even past the 50s, I mean, the 60s, they were there. The issue is the 1992 zoning ordinance changed our approval. Prior to 92, an automobile dealership could be established without special use. It was permitted by right use in the C3. In 1992, the ordinance changed, and so that it does require special land use approval. It requires other things, like having intersections farther away from—excuse me—driveways farther away from the intersection of streets. It also requires a lot size of two acres and other types of making sure that, for example, the loading zones are on the site. So this use is actually currently legally non-conforming, meaning just because the 92 ordinance was adopted, doesn't mean that use goes away. Sometimes that's referred to as grandfathering. It's not a very accurate term, because sometimes grandfathering, people think they can—it means they can do whatever they want, and they can't. So they can maintain their legal non-conforming status, and they have since 1992. They even have done some renovations of the interior of the building. The only issue becomes when they add on to the building, they're technically increasing the use, so at that point in time, they have to come into compliance with all the ordinances on effect from 92 forward. The benefit of this is that the site was already in compliance with everything on their books, so the only issue here is just going through the process. And in the end, it's a benefit for the property owner, because with—if they do receive this approval, then this approval runs with the land, and they don't have to receive approvals for this any further, and it's something that can be bought and sold with future landowners because it runs with the land, and they can do further additions down the road administratively. They would not need—well, depending on the size of the construction, they might need planning commission approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you.
Item three, vehicle purchase for the fire department. Chief Keen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Seeking approval tonight to purchase a vehicle, to replace a vehicle that was damaged in an accident, and it was deemed unreparable, so this will just be a replacement vehicle in the fleet, not an additional vehicle, so.
And the price—we did get $17,000—
Yes, today that came in—
—change from the old—
Seventeen one-ten, I believe.
So our actual cost, when it's done, is $28,0037.
Correct.
Motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to authorize the fire chief to execute the necessary documents to purchase a 2024 Ford Explorer vehicle at the Michigan State bid price of $45,147.94 from North Brothers Ford of Westland.
Support from Councilmember Witt. And again, we have to put in for the bid price of the $45,000, the $17,000 we've already received a check for, and it goes back into the general fund.
That's correct.
Okay. Further comment from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no other business. Item 13, public comment for non-agenda items only. You'll have three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak to the council? Yes, sir?
Mike Jones, Downey Street in Garden City. Just wanted to invite everyone, public and council, to our annual pig race, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year. It will take place at the Radcliffe Center on March—
Ninth.
—ninth.
Ninth.
And if you're interested in participating in a good project to help kids around the community and across the country and the world, the Kids Against Hunger Program will be taking place at the high school on March 16th? On March 16th. And we're looking for volunteers. We're going to be preparing several thousand meals that will be distributed to kids in need around the country and around the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilmember Dole.
Mike didn't mention it, but he was at the podium representing the Garden City Kiwanis. So if you're interested in either the pig race or the Kids Against Hunger, you can go to our Facebook page, and all the information is there on how to contact someone. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Hi, Lauren Anthony, Sheridan Street. I just want to read something real quick. So several meetings ago, we inducted two new firefighters to the Garden City Fire Department. After the ceremony was completed, instead of the usual recess being called so family members and friends could leave the meeting room, the mayor got up to the podium and presented our city manager with a plaque congratulating him in his five years of serving as our city manager. It was pointed out then, and several times since, that this was the longest any city manager had served in Garden City. A point was made especially that when hiring for a city manager five years ago, citizens had stated he didn't care about the city and would be gone within a few years, yet here he is, still with us, after five years. So imagine my confusion when I saw an article from Winter Springs City about how one of their top two candidates for their city manager position had pulled out because of some red flags a council member had brought up regarding his candidacy. That candidate was our own city manager. I have no problem with our city manager applying elsewhere. It's a job like any other. What I do have a problem with is being misled. I have a problem with being chastised that this man cares so much about our city, he chooses to stay working here while he's actively applying for a job elsewhere. I have a problem with being told, meeting after meeting, that we should be grateful for such a devoted city manager, when that city manager seems more interested in using us to pad his resume for his next job. He pushes for purchasing a city bus to be rented so that we can make money, but the bus isn't handicap accessible. That would take away seats, and so the money it brings in. He emails about adding an amphitheater, which I think is a great idea, to the back of Garden City Park that borders where residents live. It's a terrible location, but it's an easier one to develop. Even the Radcliffe Center, in addition to our city that I love and utilize, involves corner-cutting decisions that look flashy. There's been catastrophic leaking in the past that could have been prevented had money gone into fixing the roof, but that takes more time and money than simply fixing up the ceilings and making everything look nice on the inside, and that's not even taking into account the borderline abandonment of the Maplewood Center, which is also having its own leaking problems again. I don't expect a city manager to feel married to our city, but I do expect them to do the best job for our city in the long run and not just make decisions that will help them out in the short run. I don't expect all city council members— I don't expect all city council members to make the exact decisions that I want all the time, but I do expect them all to be upfront with us instead of misrepresenting things to make an unpopular city figure look better. I understand that these decisions help boost our revenue, and that can look good, but if we're making these decisions at the expense of our citizens, then what's the point? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, no further public comment. Uh, city managers report.
I have no comment this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Smith.
Yes, so I just want to give council and mayor and the general public an election update, because it is fast approaching now that the presidential primary is in February and not March. Our early voting center opened on Saturday, so we're three days into early voting. So far, it's going really well. We've had residents come in and, you know, just to check it out, and like, oh, vote while I'm here. So if you're interested in voting early, it works, like I mentioned at the previous meeting, much like your precinct does on Election Day. You come in, you get a ballot, you feed it into a tabulator while you're there. So that's going to be running every day through Sunday from eight AM till four PM at the Garden City Police Department in the multipurpose room. If you can't make it into early voting and you want to go to your polling place on Election Day, that is still an option. Next Tuesday, it's going to be all your regular precincts where early voting citywide is at the police department. You would go to your normal precinct next Tuesday. Polls open at seven, they close at eight. Anyone who is in line at eight PM will be permitted to vote. And also, you can still also vote by absentee. If you have an absentee ballot out there, please get it back to us. It has to be back by eight PM on Election night. At this point, being a week away, the best option would be to bring it to City Hall during business hours or utilize one of our two drop boxes outside of City Hall here or at the Radcliffe Center. And, uh, you know, mail might not get here by eight o'clock next Tuesday, so I would recommend in person or use a drop box. And one more point of information, make sure, if you have an absentee ballot, to sign the envelope that comes back to us. Our staff has made a lot of calls over the last couple of weeks. People are forgetting to sign. If you don't sign your envelope by eight PM on Election Day, you know, we cannot send it to the counting board on Election Day. So double-check, you know, ten seconds can save a lot of time in another trip, you know, to City Hall. Make sure you're signing your envelope. That's all I have today.
Okay, Mayor Protem Dole.
Uh, I just have, just a couple of things. I wanted to ask our city manager if, where we were at with looking into creating an ethics committee?
Yes, uh, Council, I believe that'll be actually on the next agenda.
Okay.
Uh, the attorney is just finalizing it. So it'll be calling for a public hearing, I believe, would be first, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And the other thing would be, um, I wanted to ask, I'm not sure if it would be at this table or if it would be during our budget meetings, but to take another look at that one point five mils that went through during COVID.
Probably be a budget.
Would that be a budget meeting?
Yes, council, the discussion at council meeting of what you'd return, what you'd cut from the budget at that point, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires.
I have nothing. I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carefodas.
I just have a couple of things. Once again, I'm asking for a budget for Radcliffe. When reviewing our invoices and finances for every month, I realize we're spending more money than I thought. That's not covered by the grant. I know the grant covers specific things like the HVAC and our roof and our bathroom updates that we're going to do, the doors, the cameras, the gym, and all that. But it doesn't cover some other things that we're doing. So, uh, these things are all amazing, and Radcliffe's turning into a beautiful community center for our residents, and hopefully, we start to utilize it more, and it becomes an asset to our city. But I think that we need to make sure that our council has some oversight on what's being spent at Radcliffe. So, again, I'm asking for a line budget. We asked for that many times since this all started. The other thing I had was regarding our master plan. I first asked about redoing our master plan back in April of twenty-three. That's a long time ago, that's ten months ago. Our master plan is currently from two thousand and fifteen with revision in two thousand and seventeen. We're supposed to review it at least every five years. I was told that it goes to the planning commission first and then is approved by council if we make any amendments. I've been reading the master plan, and I recently read in the first couple of pages that it says, "Every three to five years, a joint meeting between the city council and the planning commission should be held to review the plan together and make changes or amendments that become necessary." I don't think we've ever done that, had a joint meeting together.
No, and.
But it says that's what we're supposed to do.
The planning commission has asked for that also, and.
Well, that's what I was going to finish saying, is that the planning commission, on their most recent, um, note, says that they want more input from other city entities, and that includes us. So, um, one of the problems I have with the talk that's going on about the master plan is that we had McKenna look at it and do like a little memo or a report, and they use statistics from two thousand and ten. And the planning commission wasn't very happy with that either. I mean, we paid for this report, and they said, "Well, we don't see the need to use new statistics." That's the same statistics from a plan that we had from two thousand and fifteen. We've had the twenty twenty census. So if we're paying for those kind of things, I think we need to really stress that it should be updated as much as possible. Our median household income has changed. Lots of things have changed in our city since two thousand and ten. One of the other things I read in the master plan that we do the survey for our residents, we haven't done that since two thousand and fourteen. I know that the planning commission is kind of leaning towards not actually redoing the master plan, but just, again, doing some amendments. I think that we need to redo it. We need to get more input. One of the things that, that came up as a very one-sided thing from our residents that they said, "We need to get more high-end, single-family homes and affordable housing for our seniors and retirees, but that new developments of apartments and duplexes should not occur." We have not been listening to that at all, so we should get some more input about that. That's something that we need to listen to what our residents say. And I think over sixty percent of our residents said that the last time, ten years ago. So we should start listening to that. So I hope that we can move forward by doing more things with the council together with the planning commission so that we can get this going a little bit faster. It shouldn't take two years to do a master plan or at least get it started. And, uh, one other question I have is about departments. Our council has reminded repeatedly that our city has six principal departments, and we talk about creating new departments, like the one for our DDA director, the building department, and the community development person. Our, our, not our master plan, but our. Charter talks about how the council actually can develop new departments, and I think we need to do that. Number one, it says principal departments. It doesn't mean that there's not other non-principal departments, and it says the council can add departments at any time. It doesn't, by just an ordinance, it doesn't say we have to change the charter. So I think we need to do that and get things set straight, so we know that we have a resource department. We know we have this community development department, and we know we have a communications department. All those things right now aren't considered a department. I think we need to do that. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl.
Nothing tonight.
No, you're not going to talk about Little Shop?
No, I'll bring that up later.
Okay. I have a couple of things. First, I attended the firefighters' charity bowling yesterday. Well-attended, I believe about ninety, ninety-some bowlers, not me. Not my forte, but it was a great turnout, a lot of baskets, a lot of charity baskets, and I don't know what they ended up winning, uh, raising, but it goes to community, uh, charity things that the fire department chooses. I will say this about the city manager. He was recognized for five years, being the longest-tenured city manager. And in those five years, six years now, uh, in his six years, he has been fully committed. Does that mean he can't look for another job or something maybe closer to where he wants to retire at at some point? He can, but in the time he's here, I know he spends weekends answering a lot of coun, couple council people's questions. He doesn't take it as a nine-to-five job. Monday through Friday, he works all weekend, seven days a week. So to say he's not fully committed is wrong. Last but not least, the American Legion Post three ninety-six is selling some raffle tickets for that time story with a, a parent. It's called United Through Reading, and some of the things it does is the service member reads a book aloud to their child while being privately recorded, and they send the video and the book home to the child. These are obviously troops that are away from home for, for extended times. The child at home watches the video and follows along with the book. While the cha, while the, while the child watches the video, the caregiver captures the child's reaction and shares it back with the service member. The service member receives the feedback and is courage, encouraged to record again. So basically, troops that are away from their families, their children, young children, this program videotapes them, and they send the video back to the child. They record the child, send it back to the parent, and, um, it's a, it's a great cause, as far as I'm concerned. And if you, anybody wishes to, to receive a ticket, there's a Venmo code, it was on the screen, or you can stop in at the American Legion and buy a ticket. Uh, that's all the comments I have. I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss some labor negotiations. Councilmember Dole.
Motion to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefodas. Further comments? All in favor?
It's got to be a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call.
Councilmember Dole?
Aye.
Councilmember Carefodas?
Aye.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned or, uh, going into closed session.